Would you like to go ahead and do that, Coler? Before we start this council meeting, we're going to do the retirement for Yara, our drug dog.
There, Yara.
Hope she doesn't. Sit right in front of you, Mark, like you.
So I don't know how many of you guys have been able to meet Yara before, but Yara came to us back around 2017. She's been the first police dog that the Glen Rock Police Department's ever had, so a lot of firsts with Yara. Bill became her handler not too long after she actually showed up, and these guys have been a pretty good pair ever since. Like the exact stats, but I don't want to worry about all the drugs that she's found and different things that she's helped us along the way with. But there's come a point when Yara's ready to go spend the rest of her time just sitting on Bill's couch. We're going to retire her tonight officially so that she can go and live out the rest of her days as a couch dog. We've got a plaque for her that was going to present for her. First, I guess we did have some cookies made. I don't know if anybody wants to see how cool these are. Little peanut butter cookies for her. She likes to see us more than plaques, if you can imagine. Fun fact about Yara, she was actually, when our department found her, she was actually set up to be a patrol dog or a bite dog. She didn't quite make the cut. She doesn't like to bite people, so she was a good fit for us. Too cuddly. She had this plaque made, a picture of Yara and her handler to put on her wall.
Where's the cookies? Where's the cookies?
Where's the cookies?
Well, we're here now. We're about to see why she didn't make those. If anybody could maybe give a round of applause to Yara.
Coler, that was for Yara and Bill.
What's that?
That was for Yara and Bill.
For taking care of her. I want to know, I wanted one to know what's in the cookies. It's a hazard attention.
No, thanks.
Doggy cookies?
Okay, I'm going to call the public hearing to order for the va- final vacation and replata block six lots 22 and 23. Would you like to explain that to everybody, Lyle?
So that's for Vera Lacy. Basically just taking the two lots that she owns and combining it into one. And I'm not sure if that's the right picture. She's a corner lot, actually, so I don't think that's the right picture. And that's, yeah, but. Yes, those two. Yeah, so she's going to combine those into one big lot, which what you got right there. And then she's going to build a garage onto the existing building.
Now Jared shows up. Is there any comments or anything from the public on this vaca- vacate and replata block six lots 22 and 23? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing for the vacate and replat, and we will open the public hearing for transfer retail liquor license and the public hearing for applications for a bar and grill liquor license.
So we have, excuse me, the Wyom herd is transferring their liquor license to Home Act's oil sales. And then they are applying for a bar and grill license. All the paperwork has been submitted to the liquor division and approved. And so as far as, as paperwork and the liquor division go, they are set.
Okay, is there any public comment or questions? Any questions from council? If not, we will close the public hearing for transfer retail liquor license and applications for a bar and grill liquor license. And I would open the town at Glen Rock's council meeting. Would you please stand and say the pledge of allegiance with us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any other additions or deletions to the night's meeting? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the October 23rd, 2023 council meeting minutes?
I move to approve the October 23rd, 2023 council meeting minutes as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by name, motion carried. Moving on to reports. Councilman Milton?
I have none at this time, did you?
Councilwoman, none?
Well, yeah, all kinds of interesting stuff here. Enjoyed the commissioner's dinner and got some good information. The Boxell Road, the object is to both widen and straighten it out, and it is under construction now. The plan is to never close it down with August 20, '24 as the completion date. The road is being redesigned from the middle down. There's going to be a mountain of soil moved up there. Check it out. It's a very interesting project. Change in party affiliation. May 14th is the last day to change your political party if you wish to do so before the fall election. Community service block grant. As it existed, the community service block grant has been resolved and is being reorganized to offer some much needed services to people in Glen Rock. And I hope they have the same mission, a hand up, not a hand out. Kelly Wessel in Natrona County is the person in charge of reorganizing this service. And we should have more specific information regarding access for the service for people living here in Glen Rock. The. Got lost. I'm having to have all these pages to flip through. All right, the Main Street project gave a very good monthly report. They had 55 volunteer hours in the month of September and are currently working on the Christmas parade on small shop local project and are planning to have another business education network event in January. Those people are doing a really nice job for our town. The Pronghorn Energy Project, according to the commissioners, is still being reviewed and studied. Could be a big deal for our community with a potential construction force of 500 to 600 people. And if fully developed, a potential for 200 to 300 permanent jobs. Don't hold your breath, but know the project is still out there floating around somewhere. Property tax rebate. Under this program, people who qualify receive a rebate of property tax paid from the county and from the state. Visit with the treasurer's office, and their comment concerning this year's program will be most likely at the county level with no current indication of whether the state will do it. The application has some requirements. The treasurer should know more by March about this program, so we'll continue this program in March. I do hope it goes through. It's been very valuable to many retired people in our community. And finally, 11/11/11. On the 11th hour of the 11th month in the year 1911, a treaty was signed to end the war. Many soldiers lost their lives in this war, and several more wars since that date. Many more American soldiers have lost their lives fighting in wars in foreign lands to help prevent a direct attack on our country. It is fitting that November 11th forever be set aside to honor and respect our veterans, hence Veterans Day, November 11th. On Veterans Day this year, there were no flags proudly flying in our main street as the wind has the potential to blow them to the ground. To correct this issue of the wind, which we know blows frequently here in Glen Rock, and allow the flags to be safely displayed, I would propose at the appropriate time that when the decision is made on the distribution of the $6,387.42 from the Wyoming Community Gas through their community project designations, that $2,000 be granted to a local American legion for them to design and implement a means of flying flags in Wyoming wind, as it is the American legion who are the caretakers of our flags and who have accepted the responsibility for their proper public display. No more pages, Bruce.
Just one question for you on that money that you're wanting to put towards the FFW American Legion. What would that money go toward?
Getting the flags so they can be mounted, the mounts on the poles, so they are safe to put the flags up and so the flags would stay stable or at least hang on during the wind.
Just want to say they were the ones that was picked up that came with our light poles, and we installed them after the fact, and now we need to change them again.
Well, they're not doing the job, Bruce. You can't put a flag up there in the wind.
I don't think, I don't care what type of hole you put up there. I don't think you can put many flags up in the wind we had today, so. But I'm just saying, we spent a lot of money for the ones that are there now.
Well, that doesn't mean we couldn't have a modification to maybe make them better. And currently, the way those flags are put up is a very dangerous operation. We're fortunate someone hasn't been hurt.
I watch them go around and stand in the back of a pickup and try to get them up there.
And unfortunately, the only people that go and put them up are 75 and above. It would be nice if we could get some younger people to assist in some of that. I don't really like the idea, at least my husband, teetering on the top of that pickup.
I know the commander's trying to recruit younger vets, so.
Well, and even, you don't have to be a veteran to say, I'll come out and help put those flags up, so.
Okay, Councilman Kincaid?
Just attended the commissioner's dinner and meeting last week. Also attended the monthly planning and zoning meeting, went over the tiny house project. We've been freshing out a bit. Lyle might have some stuff on that tonight, I'm not sure. Also participated in the veterans ceremony at the school district, which is always really nice every year, so. I really enjoyed that, and it was a very good moving ceremony.
Yeah, we need to thank Carla Lee for putting that on.
Yeah, Carla is the best.
She's been devoted to that for a long, long time.
Long time, yep. It gets better every year, actually. That's all I got.
Okay, Councilwoman Coleen?
The only thing I wanted to make a note of was, I think at the last meeting, we talked about the United Churches of Glen Rock putting on a Ukrainian relief chili feed. They made over $1,900 in less than two hours with the churches getting together and everybody going and eating chili. So hurrah for them.
Tammy, Clark?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few of the things that I've been working on have included a couple of the property purchases, sales, and land swaps, including title, company paperwork, and contracts. Been working on the liquor license transfer and new application. I've been having some problems with the municipal code updating, so I've been working on that. I've had some personnel issues to discuss or to work through. I've been navigating through the phase two of the Graves' proposal, the HR company, looking at the job descriptions and how centralized we want to make the HR program. I've been terming out some employees that have left and getting new employees set up in the system and with benefits. The Christmas party is set for December 19th at 6:00 at the fort. Doors open at 5:30, and I will get RSVP information out soon to everybody. I have to have everything to them by the 13th, which is, you know, the numbers and food choices. There is still a board seat, I believe, on the solid base district?
Yes, there is, and there probably will be two because I believe Artie's planning to retire in the first of the year.
Okay, so we've got two of the housing district seats filled, so maybe we can get somebody to come forward and take on that, one of those seats. And then the other thing was just if you guys, whether you wanted to reschedule the work session or if you wanted to wait till next month, what do you think?
We're probably waiting till next month.
I think the next.
We're going to do it this month.
Kind of running out of months.
Months.
Well, if we, because we had to, we canceled it for the sixth, scheduled it for the seventh, didn't have it. So the only other time this month would be the 20th, which is next Monday night. But if you guys want to move that and go into December.
You can do one on the 4th also.
If you do it 4th of December.
Yeah.
Let's do that. Let's keep holiday season for family and for planning and for just relaxing.
So let's plan on the next council workshop to be the 4th of December then, at five.
At five?
Here at Town Hall. Okay?
That's all I have.
Okay. Kelly Lewis, treasurer?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Really about the only thing I have. I was out quite a bit with family stuff last week, but visited with Joel this morning for a little bit, county treasurer, and we did start getting our impact funds. So there'll be a resolution coming next meeting with the accounting to follow it.
Randy, public workers?
Evening, Mayor and Council. The crew's been busy with the street sweeping. We're trying to get all the leaves picked up. And in the parks, we're doing the same thing, meter reading. We've been teaching them, we take about an hour one day a week, and we've been trying to teach them about the water and wastewater since we have so many new members on our crew and how it runs and what to do if you're called out and all that. So April and I are available to help them and get called out if they need us to come out and assist them with that. We've got snow plows and the sanders on and ready to go. They're doing equipment maintenance, having a safety training this Wednesday. And CS Consulting is doing that, so the crew will not be visible for the whole morning, and they will be out at lunch, so, after lunch, so. But it's a good training. We do it annually with them, plus we do a monthly safety meeting ourselves, so we get that going. Deer Creek Crossing is complete. We have a walk-through on Wednesday at 10:00. Make sure everything's done and cleaned up and paved for the walk path because they had to dig through that. And Andrew and Hunt will be starting the wall on Wednesday. They're going to move here and start laying it out, drilling holes for shipments. It's supposed to be next Monday or Tuesday, and they said it's 12 sections of the wall, so each shipment. So they want to be done before Christmas, so. Watch that go up.
Pray for good weather.
Keep your fingers crossed for good weather because the painters, so they can put the anti-gravel graffiti paint on once it's all completed, so.
Are they going to start on Sixth Street or from Fourth Street?
I think they're going Sixth because they get, I got them permission to drive down the Short Powers Road, and it ends right there. So they're going to start at Sixth and work backwards, so.
Okay.
Come down that. Other than that, Lyle and I have been working on the ordinance for the taps. We're trying to, because it contradicts itself in about 10 different places, so we're going to try to rewrite that and get it fixed.
Okay. Chevy, Town Square?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have been working on four certifications, and I have completed them. They have been ranging in digital event marketing, social media content marketing, and just event planning as well. On the 22nd of this month, we're going to have the Boys and Girls Club from Glen Rock over at the square for free ice skating for them. It's going to start at 1:00 PM. The summer concert series is set. We are also having a first-time yoga at the square this summer, so that will be coming up. Working on a kids lemonade day, so where we have an official lemonade's day for the kids events, and then hopefully have their stands at the concerts and other events, so they can be vendors there as well. So it can be a whole summer project for them. I'm also working with the art teachers of Glen Rock to bring in a chalk fest festival, so I'm working with Story on that. And then I'm also working for sponsorships for the Town Square events for 2024, so that is it.
Sounds exciting.
Lyle, public, I mean, building inspection?
Evening, Mayor.
Code enforcement.
Something like that. So I've got a lot to throw at you here. 133 building permits to date. Got some trees cut down on Sixth and Fur. I don't know if you noticed that, going up the hill, they did a pretty good job trimming that up. And they cut down that fence, or they're almost done cutting down the fence on Fifth Street. ECI has proposed a car wash. They're looking for a building permit. They got engineer drawings to me today. Septic system is, is still out there in the works. The entrance to the road is going to get reviewed by CEPI for any requirements that we may be missing, so we're going to look at that. But really nice addition. Looks like it's going to be a pretty nice car wash, so.
They're looking at putting a septic system to it instead of digging a sewer?
Their drainage system, he called it a septic system, but their drainage off the car wash. That's special in how they got it collected, so that's not done yet.
But where do they want to put it, Lyle?
It's the entrance, the first entrance into Oregon Trail. You take that right there to go around the corner. You take a left and you go right on to his property.
Goes on the town property and then his.
Yeah, there's a short piece of town property right there, and we're going to just make sure that that entrance is right. And then they're going to pave the whole thing, and it'll be a.
So that was my question.
Pretty nice, pretty nice amount of paving, so it should be pretty nice. The Lincoln Building, I think we talked about that before, about doing the walk-through. That group was really excited about the whole building, and they talked about how to repurpose that building after we get the cleanup done. So waiting to hear from them again. Planning board meeting that we had last Tuesday, we discussed tiny homes in R1 district, and we discussed tiny homes and RVs possibly going into mobile home district. We've found out that there's a lot of questions, a lot of different things to talk about, so that's still in that phase. We're going to keep talking about it until we're ready to bring it to you. Attended the Wyoming Conference Building, Conference of Building Officials last week in Casper. It was pretty good. One big topic was affordable housing. That's a really hot topic right now. The average US home across the United States is 473,000. So affordable housing is a big topic, and they're talking about bringing in pre-made homes to places. And the state of Montana just adopted statewide that you have to allow tiny homes, pretty much, they're not calling it tiny home. They're calling it something different, but you have to accept them in an R1, R2 district. You don't have a choice. So there is a bill right now in the Wyoming House, the exact same thing. So the Wyoming Planning Association has, they're, they're saying they, they're strongly recommending that we don't adopt this. But it's before the House, and it would, it would, they're, they're, they're saying that you would automatically accept tiny homes into an R1, R2 district.
Why are they against this bill?
Well, because they want it to be left at the local level. They want control of that to be left.
Yeah, you don't want the state telling us.
I can't see Teton County saying that they're going to have tiny homes in an R1 district.
I think, I think there'll be a big fight with that, and that isn't this year's legislation for the state, a budget session? I believe this year in January, so getting other things on the floor could be awful tough.
And they have, they have another bill out there that is really probably pointed towards Teton County, but it's about speeding up building permits. And if that passed, it would, it would produce a ton of paperwork to, you have to document how, how you're going to do a building permit. So the Wyoming Planning Commission is saying it's just going to slow it down, and it's going to hurt local municipalities, so they're strongly against it. But, and I'm really hoping that doesn't fall through because it would be a nightmare. Last, the Congress County Tourism Board meeting tomorrow. There's money out there available, and I don't know, Jared, if you can throw up that. This is our local artist here, Sam Bledsoe, came up with a pony express rider riding a dinosaur, T-Rex. And then I found this company out of Gillette that's called Untamed Designs, and they kind of took it to another level. And that's what they, this sign would be 10 feet tall by 15 feet long. We'd have one at both entrances to the town out on the interstate. And there's probably going to be some more to it at the bottom of this thing. But the money's available now, so we're going to try and get it, and then that'll happen tomorrow night. Alongside of that, Main Street is trying to redo the historical marker signs, all the historical markers that we have around the area. They're trying to redo those and make this new sign with a QR code and create a scavenger hunt. Be kind of a cool idea, so they're trying, trying to get that passed, too. That's all I have.
That's a lot. That's neat. That's a big project because of most of those marker signs of, last time they were worked on was the late 70s.
Yeah, it'd be pretty cool because if you clicked on this QR code, it'll pop up and give you all this information, and you can put a video in there if you want, so.
That's clear back when we still had a historical society commission here in town.
So they're, they're tackling that project, so kudos to them.
Yep. Coler, Chief Police?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just been busy the last few weeks, working on reviewing our policies and procedures, adding some, taking some out, as well as reviewing forms, which is probably the most tedious part of this job, I'll tell you. So the last couple of weeks have been a blast. I also attended the Veterans Day ceremonies. Started at the elementary school at 7:45 in the morning, went over to the intermediate school, and then got to finish out at the high school. That was pretty, pretty neat. Those guys did a really good job at all three of the schools and all three of the different presentations, so big thanks to our veterans, obviously. Been working with Douglas Police Department. They invited us to share in their Shop with a Cop program this year. We're actually going to partner with them as well as the Wyoming Highway Patrol this year, so be a little bit bigger even than it was last year. This year, we are again just participating with them. They were fortunate enough to have quite a bit of donor money, and so they, they invited us over again this year. So hopefully next year, we'll be pushing, maybe start our own program over here specific to us. But until then, always happy to take advantage and get some of our local youth gifts for the holidays. Also looking to get our list together for our deliveries that we provide to the community, so working with Sharon Kemp on that. Hopefully we'll have that in the next couple of weeks as well, and we'll work with the Salvation Army on making sure that all the kids are plenty outfitted with toys this year, so probably one of the best parts of the whole year, I think. So other than that, just, I spent today a little bit following Jared around. He's working on cars. I'm super helpful. I can sometimes even hold a screwdriver, so reminds me of how useless I am when it comes right down to that, but that's all I've got.
Coler, how, how many kids are going to get in this shop with a cop program? That's a really good program.
So it's, I mean, they have an application process. I can't give you an exact number because, to be honest with you, that's really up to the chief over there. He's going to make the decision once they get all the applications in and decide how many that we'll be able to facilitate, which is based on the amount of money that they actually have donor-wise and then the application. We want to make sure that we do have enough money to share between each kid, so say we have enough that it divides up to be in $100 per kid.
And is that from age six through high schools or age?
They really didn't put an age limit on it, to be honest with you, but, I mean, it's generally focused more toward the probably 15 and under group. I guess based on the applications I've seen in the past.
They have to believe in Santa Claus.
That helps, yeah. It's, it's actually a really great program they put together. It's actually a really great program they put together over there and something we'll work on, but they take them over, we take them over to the Boys and Girls Club after we go shopping and the Boys and Girls Club actually has a station set up for wrapping all the presents and they have hot chocolate and treats and it's a pretty fun little event, so.
Okay. Jared, IT.
Evening, Mayor and Council. A lot of break fix and just working on PD vehicles and stuff like that, but also spent a bunch of time on the new website, so that's now live. It's still slight work in progress. I'd say it's about 95% done, you know, it was just one of those things that I finally needed to just set it live so that we could get going and start ironing some stuff out, but yeah, should be a little more, a little easier to, to get around as well as a little more modern looking than our, our old site, which served us well for quite a while, probably since the beginning of the internet. And yeah, so if you guys ever, if you see anything on there or any suggestions, any comments, adjustments, things you want to see added, or let me know and we can get that on there. But yeah, that's been about it for me for the last couple of weeks.
Okay. Moving on to items from the floor. Is there any items from the floor this evening? Police come up to the podium.
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Crowley. My house is up in Sunup and it burned the 10th or the 28th of October and I'd like permission to move an RV on the site while it's being rebuilt. I've been working with Lyle Hurd here, or Hunt, and he told me to show up at this meeting.
So we have a temporary conditional use permit. I think it's on you.
Yes.
Yeah.
We could deal with it now or come back to it, but it's definitely on your.
Condition use permit is on our, under new business for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other items from the floor? Not, we will move on to, there is no unfinished business, we'll move on to new business. First item on the agenda is the transfer of a liquor license and permit application to Homex Oil Sales, East Gate Service at 393 East Birch. It's being transferred from Wyoming Hurd LLC. Do we need any more than the information we already got done from the public hearing?
Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that we transfer retail liquor license from Wyoming Hurd to Homex Oil Sales.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing no, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. And the next order of business is license or permit application for Wyoming Hurd LLC doing business as Rosie's Cantina Mexican Grill at 416 West Birch Street for a, what do they call this one now?
Bar and Grill.
Bar Grill, they changed the name of it, but a Bar Grill License. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve this application.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, any other discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. Our next order of business that come up here is Town of Glen Rock Board and Commission's application form is for the Housing Authority for David Kenna, who lives at 50 Young Boulevard in Glen Rock. Dave's present. Are you willing to serve on this board, Dave?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Well, it's a lot bigger than it looks.
Okay. Okay, for this one, is there a motion to appoint Dave Kenna to the Housing Authority Board?
I move we appoint David Kenna to the Housing Authority Commission.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. Congratulations. Town, the next one is.
Are we going to do Gwen now?
Yeah, there's two of those, but they're for the senior, for the barber apartments. Same thing.
Yeah, Housing Authority.
Yeah, basically, yeah. Okay, the next one is for Gwen Powell to be on the Housing Authority Board also. She's present. You're willing to serve? Okay. Is there a motion to approve Gwen Powell for the Housing Authority?
So moved.
So there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. So I think that's just the two, correct?
Yes.
The next order of business is a community project designation from Wyoming Community Gas for the amount coming from Wyoming Community Gas is $6,387.42 and we have to come up with a project. We talked about this a few months ago and we kind of just let it slide, unfortunately. Margaret has came up with and asked for 2,000 of it to go towards some new flag holders. Maybe we can get them a little lower so those guys don't have to stand in the back of the truck and not fall out. It's going to have to be something that'll be able to be put on those flag, on those light poles, so we'll have to check with that company what we can install that that might work better. And the other part of the money was, we discussed it the other day at a council or at the city department head meeting was to put the rest of it towards some bleachers.
Aluminum bleachers.
Aluminum bleachers. Picnic tables. Is there any other?
And where were those going to be placed?
Park.
Which park?
Town Park. Town Park, then we want to put picnic table down at the tot lot and then we'd like to put one down.
Rookstool, Rookstool Park.
There's nothing there.
There's nothing, there's no, there's no table or anything there either, so.
Are you going to set those tables in cement so someone can pick them up and pack them off?
Yep, they'll be cemented and hold it down.
Good. How much do you anticipate that project totally costing, Randy?
We'll use the full 4,000.
Will that cover it?
No, it, it should. It'll be close. First goal is to get the picnic tables and then we'll go out to bleachers.
Good.
What are the bleachers for?
Well, we need one more set out at South Brack for the ball fields and we need, we'd like to have one more set down with that part of the ball fields down there. It might be a lot cheaper. Well, they get moved around.
They get moved around a lot. We move them uptown for Deer Creek Days, they go, they go a lot of places. So with those two projects in mind, is there a motion for the use of the community gas project money?
I move we use the community gas money for the two projects as presented.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. We have an application for a conditional use permit application for Elizabeth Crowley at 538 Sage Road in the Sunup Ridge subdivision. Request is to put an RV on site for emergency, for the emergency rebuild of the house due to a fire. Can be parked on the east side of the existing garage, no sewer will be available. Will need to be skirted RV as temporary electric can be run, temporary electric can be run to the RV. Temporary permit will out for, for six months. If another three, and if a three months extension is required, verification of adequate progress will need to be verified by the building inspector, no extensions will be granted beyond one year from the date of the original permit. So is there a motion for this conditional use permit?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. We'll issue that conditional use permit.
That's my house.
Yes, ma'am.
Good luck to you in getting your new house put up there.
Oh, thank you.
Hopefully it doesn't take them that long to get your house taken care of. Yeah. First ordinance, reading of ordinance number 746 and ordinance approving the final plat of Sunup Ridge Block 6 Lot 24, whereas the Town of Glen Rock contends for final vacation and replat of Block 6 Lots 22 and 23. Sunup Ridge consisting of .35 acres more or less of Lot 8 of Section 4, all located within township .33 North, R37 West, created, creating one lot subdivision, the plat, and whereas the plat consists of previously platted land located within the Town of Glen Rock, Wyoming, and whereas the plat requires approval by ordinance following a public hearing, whereas the public hearing, the Town of Glen Rock Planning and Zoning Staff recommended the town approve the request to plat the above referenced property and whereas the governing body of the Town of Glen Rock finds that the above described plat should be approved, now therefore be ordained by the governing body of the Town of Glen Rock, Wyoming pursuant to Wyoming State Statute and Glen Rock Municipal Annexation Code, the Town of Glen Rock grants approval for this annexation passed and approve the first reading the 13th day of November 2023. Is there a motion?
I move that we pass ordinance 746 as presented.
For first reading?
For first reading.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. Next order of business is ordinance number 747 and ordinance approving the final plat of Metal Arc Edition Number 3, whereas the Town of Glen Rock intent, intent of final vacation replat of Lot 6, 7 and 9, Metal Arc Edition Number 2. The Town of Glen Rock consisting of 6.82 acres more or less and Lot 6, 7 and 8, a portion of the west half southeast quarter of section township 33 North range 75 West, creating a four lot subdivision Metal Arc Number 3, the plat, and whereas the plat consists of previously platted land located within the Town of Glen Rock and whereas the plat requires approval by ordinance following a public hearing, whereas after the public hearing, the Town of Glen Rock Planning and Zoning Staff recommended the town approve the replat, the above referenced property and whereas the governing body of the Town of Glen Rock finds that above described plat should be approved, now therefore be ordained, the governing body of the Town of Glen Rock, Wyoming pursuant to Wyoming State Statute and Glen Rock Municipal Annex Code, Town Council grants approval of this annexation passed on first reading the 13th day of November 2023. Is there a motion?
I move we pass on first reading ordinance number 747.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay, motion carries. Now get it clear back to the top. I think our next order of business is bills and claims, correct?
I move we pay our bills.
There you go. There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
The big Andreen Hunt, I assume that's for part of the project, that's going to start?
That's on Second Street, all the, they got all the pipe at 6th and Grant.
Sitting on the corner of Grant first.
Is it starting this fall, is it still starting this year?
They're hoping to start right after Christmas, right after they get the hold of it.
They'll do the wall first, it's all the sewer line and stuff laying up there and some water, fire hydrants and some water, yeah.
The 473,000, that's 100% for Second Street?
That is about 95%, I'd say.
No, all the money.
All the money, yeah.
No, that's okay.
Products that they have there. Because a lot of it's still back there.
Yeah.
And just under discussion, I have a bill in for, for my plumbing and heating company, so I will abstain from the vote, but.
And I have.
Do you?
One, so I will abstain also.
All right. So is there, we haven't done motions.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all, any of those opposed by nay, motion carries. Needed three yays and we got them, so our bills and claims have been paid this evening. So is there anything else this evening to come, come before this council meeting?
So we own a lot down on Brewbaker, Little Six, grave of court there.
Mm-hmm.
I've had empty lot for quite a few months now and so I get calls three or four times a week, people wanting to rent things and whatnot, so we purchased a fifth wheel, put on the lot for, for rent for some workers in the area, some guys working on the pipeline north of Glen Rock. Lyle called me today, so that's a problem. So we're trying to figure out what we can do with this situation.
We can discuss that at our next workshop for you, Doug. It would have to be, because we have several others in town, usually it needs to be a conditional use permit to let it be there for a while or be used to become public because, or permanent, because there's some, there's a lot more to our code that covers RVs that are required, other, that's different than just mobile homes themselves. So it'll have to come up, we'll have to discuss that and, and move it forward to planning and zoning and let them guys go over it with Lyle and Jared and we will work on that diligently for you and get back with you, if that'll work for you, so we, so we can get that figured out.
What timeframe is that?
Can we do that on the first Tuesday of December?
On our next meeting?
Yeah, if you do that first Tuesday, we're, we have the workshop on the first Monday, so that's the following night. So we could have something probably, if everything gets approved or worked on, Doug, we could probably have it at the first council meeting in December for you, so that's just about three weeks away now, so that would be the fourth, would be the 11th or 12th summer, 11th of December.
Yeah.
So where am I at now then, like?
Well, right now it's, you know, do you have it already sitting on the lot?
Correct. It's skirted, it's all set up, ready to.
Okay, right now really, we've kind of got the cart ahead of the horse, but we really need to get the conditional use permit and that decision made by the, by the Planning and Zoning Commission and then their approval and bring it to council for that meeting. Hopefully we can get that all taken care of. It kind of leaves, I understand it leaves you in limbo, but it's, there's a lot more to the ordinance, our ordinance doesn't allow them because of the other ordinances by state for having RVs, there's a lot more that needs to be done to have RVs all the time. So we'll work on that real quick. I just, I don't know what we do with it right now, but we'll have to, we can discuss that and get back, you know.
I guess my question is that there's several around town that are already, you know.
There's several of them that have been permitted that, but they, we went through the process of discussing that with the, and doing that process and there are some other lots that they were wanting to put them in that they have not been allowed to be put on anymore, so it just, it just needs to be, it just needs to go through the correct process of going through the planning and zoning and stuff. process of going through the planning and zoning and stuff, so it's, it's gonna hold you up a few weeks, but we can, we can go from there.
So don't rent it until we get...
Yeah, I hope, yeah, I hate to hold you up, but let's, let's, let's get, see if we can get paperwork and everything discussed and looked at and improved, approved and go from there, and we'll, we'll, we'll stay right on it and, uh, just keep checking with Lyle, and we will do the, we'll do what we can to, see what we can do to alleviate the problem.
Appreciate it, 'cause there's just a lot of workers in the area that need to play their...
Yeah, it's, the, the number of workers is gonna pick up dramatically here, well, we're starting to get the, the impact funds, that means the, the wind farmer stuff is starting, so we're getting impact fund from the state already, so, just started, so there's gonna be a lot, we're, we're gonna see workers here for over the next two years, so, it's gonna be, it's gonna be thick and heavy, so...
Okay.
And that's why we're gonna have to have everybody follow the same process.
Yeah, we need, yeah, we need to do, we need to do it the right way, and, and there's some stuff we need to discuss, if we're, it's just like the tiny home thing, if, wherever that goes, of how we're gonna tie them into water and sewer and stuff and make them, you know, not as a trailer house setting in R1, it has to be set on a, some, a foundation that's approved and stuff like that, so, we'll, we'll work on that and we'll stay in touch with you.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else to come before the council meeting this evening?
Mr. Mayor, just one last thing in reference to the flags, I just wanted to let, I don't know if it's Councilwoman calling or Councilwoman Dunn, but Jared and I'd gladly help out with getting those hung up next year, I'm sure that with the mayor's permission, we can...
Sure, there's no, there's no problem with that.
Cause there's probably four or five times a year that they...
That they go up and, I think the last time we set those up, they, I don't know why they were set so high, 'cause those guys had to make a, it was hard for them to reach them, then, so they made something to get them up and they're, they're kinda, Paul?
The, uh, they go put the flags up now, send them that high.
Okay.
Because they've got vehicles that run along the curb, the bars.
Yeah, and hitting the flag.
If they hit them, they break them, so if you're gonna go lower, you're gonna probably have to turn them till they're on the side.
Side or something else, yeah. It, it's something we gotta look at, 'cause it's gotta be something that mounts that for, that's designed to go on those light poles, so, we'll have to figure that out and we'll, we'll get started working on that.
I'll, I'll go, I'll help you guys with that.
They can reach up and snag it.
They can, we can get it, it's on the back of the motorcycle every spring, every year, just they can get it.
They can reach up and snag it?
They can, if we can get it, it's on the back of the motorcycle every spring.
Yeah.
It doesn't stay up there.
I'll partner with IT this year, Mr. McCormick, we'll set up a little surprise for them.
Zap them.
Okay, so...
Thank you. Judy and I neither want to be flag widows.
No, it's, it's a project for, I've watched those guys struggle to get those up and it's trying to stand in the back of the truck, and if the wind's blowing hard like it was today, you get blowed over and out of the back of the pickup, so...
Exactly.
It's, it's a process.
We could run them down with our man lift for them.
True, very, very true.
That'd be really good.
Be a quick process, you just drive up and down the street and, and load them, yeah, so that's true.
That'd be great, Randy, 'cause the problem they always have is that when they go to put the flag up, if there's a car parked there, you know, they, they can't reach over the car up the pole.
Again with the man lift.
You're on.
Make it, make it a lot, make it a lot easier to get that done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, so...
We could probably...
Yeah, so, uh, if there's nothing else to come before this meeting this evening, I would have somebody entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay?